Yeah, you probably.
Yeah.
And. Another day. I'm. Some. My plans. Yeah. I'm.
Um.
It's just my daughter. Yeah, I do remember a lot of times. There were a couple of times too. We have.
Did she reach out to you about that?
We're on a ridge. Right. They have. They're acting.
She know I was. I mean. I was. I was long and we're looking. Just to talk to people who's out. If it's true. But not.
I did that much. Uh, what would I have from anywhere? You're. I see. I know it was all. Actually.
Yeah, yeah.
To scale. Kind of a crazy story. We was up on the roof. I don't know. I was down below. And. Mike and both. Hit it hard six through.
Yeah, I thought.
Actually something fired. I don't know.
There's.
It'll be fine. But. It was. The end of the day. He said. So what is up? I decided your mother. Part of them. Stay there for me. Oh, we. I'm getting this. Uh, please. Relative. Yeah, that them. But he everybody was wanting. So. Both. Yeah. Man. I. Much. Prepare. A pop. Yeah. Man, like. That's it. One time I was. Back when I was freaked out. We're used to living over here before I had a little family. I was coming home from work one day. Big old storm system was coming in. And I had the right idea that I can. Settle for it. The chief not supposed to be there. I learned later. Like, why don't we? Jake, how are you? And then it just asked me. We're here this. Oh, I'm great at MA. Oh, no. Real close. And tiny. And I just started playing. My business. I bought. On the road. What's the wrong? No. And they all probably. Give us all. I'm just trying to get to. So.
Not.
Yeah. No. I heard to be. I'll question. So you just. Probably playing. A lot of you with. My. Oh, it's. I. It's. The. My. They. Love. Then. I tried to be. And we have. Slow to the work. Where.
We're giving.
And then. I'm.
It's. A big show. Same.
About what looks like. I mean, now. It's not somebody who's involved. I. When the guy killed that. I was. I was. They didn't remember. I went home. I followed. Definitely how. There. Something we're doing. Right. I'm using the big. Now, I just can't. Anyway, somebody I think called. Like. Like. My. Well, yeah. People. People. The grass. Often be like. No, no. It's. Well, I. Yeah. Oh, I got. Well, just don't. And there's. You know. It's all. I think enough in New York. You're about. There. And all of a sudden, you know, I'm tucked in. And that's.
I. Thank you.
Wow. Well. Well, I mean. From having been. You're. That way. Yeah. Yeah. Um. Well. I'm.
Twelve.
We're in. More than I. I don't have. So.
To be.
Yeah.
I'm glad.
Hey.
Obviously, I'm a little bit married. But, uh. For a long.
Not that I. I was.
But.
Yeah. I'm. Married. So. That's a. Yeah. I have. You. I thought. You. That's. Yeah. And. All of you. Your marriage. Especially. But I just.
Never. Where we cry.
I remember. This. Down. Moms were married. Married. So.
Very much. That's weird.
All ready over there. Fuck on the wall. Through the sun. It's. All new. Order. That's called.
How is this up?
Here.
Danny, let's go.
Here.
Near time. Here. Bill Highton. Can we watch? There. Any case?
Yeah.
All right.
Good. Stay together and. Let. But believe this. You're black. You're not. See it. The two are called. Which seems. Unintentional. Yeah. The check counter. For the show. Who will be agenda? And who will use that absurd cash? Your practical. To you. So. And then. Change. Through the. Where? Uh. And then. We're. Taking a motion. With the. Jungle. I have some. So.
So.
Dissection. Forever.
How?
Today. Public forum. Public. Public. There's a. Got anything for us?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Appreciate the weather. And. Probably. You have a. Little van there. A little earlier. I think. Walked out again. That's always. New appreciation. Even so. The ones that. Just going on. Weather wise. I don't really have anything to. Uh. Add to. What I said. That on. Week left. On the evening. I would do remind you that there's a change on. Half. And hours. Camera. On this coming Wednesday. Is at eight. At five. P M. Um. Who knows? Being sponsored by. Far Insurance. Shopping Center. Uh. And. That's really. About it. We have our. Our. Literary Festival this Saturday. Hope everybody will. Make an appearance. So I'll be. Do a lot of. Hard work for this thing. And we need to. Score. Anyway, we can. If you see or out about. When you're not doing anything. Just add. If there's any way you might help her out during the day. If you need some help. Sure. I really can't that long.
I don't.
Right. Stand before. Let us see. Uh. Program. Anything before. Look.
Um. I'm working on converting our Facebooks. Uh, off of desktop to online. Um. It is actually gonna save us. About. I think it's about sixty thousand dollars a year. Approximately. Um. Fees and everything. I'm also looking into. Switching our payroll. To. For books. Because that essentially is about nineteen hundred dollars a year. By switching it over to them. Because everything is packed. So it's signed up for. Payroll comes with it. So I have used. The service that they're providing. As instead of. Need. Eighteen. The nineteen hundred dollars a year. Or whatever it is to our payroll. So. We're gonna. They weren't working on catching up minutes. Um. Next. Once I get this all converted over. Then. I would start on current minutes. And work records. So you got all. Come down. For current payments. Sorry.
Program also. New.
Yeah, we do. They will do our dedicated. And tactics for us. We don't have to do any of that.
Did they? Mr. Mania do all the record management. Backing up and all that kind of stuff.
Everything is in the.
Right.
That would give us perfect budget. Plan. Which naturally.
Everything, yes.
So. Up to date.
Yeah. Once. They did payroll. And. Uh. Push it through. It automatically goes right into our books. We don't have to do any more. General entry than messing around.
So they'll say it.
They'll say it. Time. That's.
Questions for. Or.
John, Mr. Ritter. Would you know all your minds? Um. Been helping. Uh, Ray. And I'm. With sauce. Online. Paperwork. Et cetera. Uh, beyond that. Uh, I'm not much. So forth in last week. The following online. So. For work session. Please let me know if anything. My list. So off. I would communicate. I think that all Saturday. Uh, last week. Uh, some.
Uh, with that. We. New officer. And the chief this afternoon. He seemed like a. Very, very nice. Uh, gentleman. And. Those are stuff. And they are. Now. Call this afternoon. There was a. Vehicle. And the big challenge. That's on paper. Load up. For. That period. So one major issue. Sure. Working traffic. On. I was. Doesn't anybody get excited about it? Something. To. Do. Uh, he will be with. The chief will bring him. The next workshop. And. And producing everyone. And they'll be. Just ask me. So. Yeah, online. But he's doing this week with the chief. And then Brad. Should be back. Uh, at T of school. Coming in the next week. And then. Very knowledgeable. On the law. Nice. Nice chat. That's great. Any questions for? Time. All right. Well, let's put that on the list. Ask. So. Anything you're doing. Exciting about it. Are. They are being. Get ready to do inventory. I think. One of the ones I've already started on. The. Like. Twenty third. When I'm. Looking for. Sports. Like that. Uh, me and Brad are gonna go. You take the. Uh, side by side. A little town drugs. Drive around. See us. Some ability issues. And. Try to knock that out.
I can give you a four. As I can see. So.
Oh, what?
It has a. Excuse. So. Public works for key.
For that. And make it two. But other than that, I think. Uh. The. Early.
Javier, you may show me. The. Next time. Follow up. On. In.
Uh. You want to. And. And we'll follow up with. Well, we already. Did.
What is that? May? And then?
Thirty.
First. Which state?
May.
May. Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Pat?
There's nothing. They knew all the land commissions. Since the last set. Just reiterating that. I'm thankful to. The real council. For taking the time to talk through. The issue of minutes. Also. Then. Coubt staff. For. Your work on. Talent. And. You recall that. Item commission. Showed up to me because of the issue. It's not glad. Everybody's. Put a lot of thought. And effort into it. I'm a long way. And we're thankful for your efforts. But. You just want to feel the. Report back. And not. That we use. As a council addressed it. Staff is addressing it. So thank you. For all you're doing. All the different things that happen. So you're doing a good job. You know. That would be. So they look. Uh. Does it? It looks? That's correct. Well. That's the. I could. They said. But I was. Like. We've been. Been for six months. So. It's good thing we don't do it. That. Well. It's a lot of meaning to it. Well. It was a good. Impetus. Yeah. A draft. Of its issue. Yeah. I would say that. And every time. We made it. For. Yeah. Before. Deserving. I'm tired of all these questions. But. I try to look at the draft. And the town plan. And I think. So. Seems like so. Like. Half done. Is there? Deadline? Or whether they're gonna have a graph that we. Do? Well. You might say that. Are not getting last month. Put us a month behind. So next. This summer. I haven't. By yet. Or. All. It would know. It's. It's close to being. Completed. But. It was. Well, we were running. Had a report about. Like. Didn't. Javier, would you say it's a month and a half? Month. It's close to.
I think it's close. We did that. You know.
Okay. But I.
You might be. Close. If they can do that.
I was trying. So. It'd be nice. To. Do. Thing. And I tried to look at it. But it's. Too. I mean. Organized for me. To really understand. What's all that?
Because. Drafts are the matter of policy. And that's. I think. It's more reasonable for us. Top box. At time. And so.
So even if there's one section that's. Maybe. Maybe that has to see that section.
And then when you clean up some of that. It's. The. Off. So maybe it's. But I'll email. And then.
But. Just. Get it out. Really. To get it done. You know. You skip the background. So. Finish. You know. I did it. For years. So. Thank you. But.
Now I have. A. From late in the term. The transmission. That. Javier. And. All of it. That included two. And substitute. Itself. And. So. So it is not. Completely. Love at all. Somewhere. Or not. Off. So. Started out.
So I've spent the past week or so. Trying to. Uh. Get others. That. You may. Discuss that. Uh. I'm too sorry. That we. Tried to. Uh. And Mr. Barry. You were very.
Yeah.
For the drive.
You were very. Happy. There were a whole lot of things. Did. Cover up. A lot.[943.26]
So yeah, very happy. Happy this is a great committee for Fourth of July. Like I meant, I know I mentioned Javier, brother, if you think about everything else. Instead of doing it in a next committee, which is uh a lot to ask of volunteers, I think. I'm gonna do separate committees specifically, Fourth of July committee, Batto committee, or Father's Day committee, uh I think it'll be easier to get people to fit that way, you know, instead of we, we, thanks for all your work on Fourth of July, and us, and the elders being out. But yeah, so Father's Day is still kind of a great cloud in my head, but we're getting there, but, but uh I think that's pretty much the backhoe wrapped up. It's just about getting that going this Saturday. We're in a good place with the fly right now.
And one thing I'm doing on an association, so parents' committee is uh trying to find some corporate sponsors by corporate, they get tired of doing or some of the other businesses in town or not even in town. Uh offer to donate maybe like a thousand dollars to give an extra band here so you can test something. People there who use, grow the company, we put it on at six o'clock. Uh I have received in responses to that. I appreciate what you give them necessarily. We have a large boat, we said, you know, it's quite sort of found nearby and businesses.
We got a tiny, you know, and they let it say they had a tap.
So you want to, so.
Uh I said minutes, uh I think basically we will continue to look at budgets, um revenue expenditures, um webpage, website and their basis square. And uh more than anything, problems, I guess, I would bet, so people have wrapped up, have a special one. Have that, well, I guess that was uh it's been a four years or so. That got filled. If it's gonna be revived, then don't matter what everybody, what's that, that issue?
Did you get anything on parks and rail?
Um it's an anthem, but I know they're working on a budget for this year and it's true. With uh previous for the markets, so I think the biggest venture, to be honest, this year. You know, anybody personally got and they do partially that except if you get there as well, they put that's a long way going. And then maps are uh. Yeah, I said, we should know that's short.
I was relying something about Javier, then I'm just gonna make the only question more. Thank you, Brian. All this kiosk building here leads into the farm. If you found a harvest as good as Woodborne, they could look for it in trailers, you know. That may be there.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
That's might be the one in the park. Oh, well, well, over here, you know, that's uh.
Ready to come into the tree.
Oh, yeah. Hey, people over there.
I like that.
Would burn into the, into the structure, wouldn't that have the absolute?
Yeah. So you put the quality on it?
Yeah. No, no.
Yeah, that's a great.
Well, that's, that was one. That from the lab.
Yeah.
Lamination, thank you so much.
That's why when you're in the neutral, you're like, one again.
But that's, that's maybe the, that's.
I know, I know, open burner.
This is. Not actually. Good idea. Any questions for us, guys? We can see.
Nothing new, other than what I reported last time, except for um with the event coming up, Ray Scott still is kind of on the booth at the event to sort of trial, launch. Getting prepared the info out to the community. So that's been working on a lot of graphics, covering books for kids and things like that, snowed it off. So he'll have the table down here as well.
When you say pets been getting it out, just having like child like shots of like pets will be emergency broadcast and stuff. Is it really, you know, like being disseminated, you know, like something like this?
He's not a physical present and he's not the alert system department. It's a good company in there because John was looking at, I think I mentioned that last time, uh a free alerting system. But then uh we put that on hold because the county, Javier, you've been working with Sonny at UCC, right?
Let me get him the.
That was the other thing we need to check on because the county said they might be at a point where they can do a fine grained alert system just for spots.
So I have an update.
So we're pursuing that first before we do any other. This is really more like uh public service advertised, the option of things like that to say here are the ready Scottsville channels you can subscribe to, here's information that you should know, et cetera. And is there a status on that?
I mean, we went back and we talked late last week.
Yeah.
So I talked with them, uh you guys started talking about messaging system. So it makes sense to me. So just a little bit of follow up on my side.
Okay.
Think it's like I said, you know, be usable, average, just kind of use for it first.
I think so too, right? We're paying for, for our taxes, right? So it doesn't make sense to
to not the.
To reinvent the wheel. We don't have to.
Any other questions? Thanks so much. Uh Spady, anything to work on anything?
Well, uh for the police department, it's the time of one man itself for me, but uh Chief Jacob and Brad came up to the house. I was giving that, and it was uh the back, it was talked and uh they are really excited about the environment. Um I expect their appreciation for the extra work they put in the world. So put the pandemic out, they put in, so that, but uh it's been a lot. So they're excited about that. So let me come on board. Uh they said they've been very good. So we thought I'd get a year full of next work session.
Thank you. Yeah, he, he is very uh solid about the job, even though he hasn't been doing it that long. Being a gentleman says he was with these, before they went to the region job, was not a dumb, wooden cowboy that just wanted to rush somebody dying to go and tell us what to do. So he, he has the uh the Nelson, they avoid me, I think, to handle their situation.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you both asked him that, yeah.
Remind them.
So I think it's gonna work out well for any questions, thank you. All right, I'll take care of that. Uh let's move on. I have seven A amendments to the town code. Javier explained for those all.
So we discussed a little bit during work session. Um if you take a look at our, I was left in my improvising. It really doesn't make sense. Uh it technically says we should be activated after his ordinance has been passed. Um and then that correlates with uh some commentary, council gave back in uh March work session about seeing if we could pass some savings and most of our products. Uh we kind of hit a reality of local newspaper only artifacts three days a week. Uh less than us people are actually reading the newspaper for something informative than this for. Uh so I work with uh Jim Bowden on the language of this and for recommendations. Uh beyond that, we have a draft ordinance here that I think would be much more clear. Uh it would respect uh transparency, especially with essentially by just following the original guidelines of the forums publicly announced. And then naturally, uh anything we've drafted about this, it's sheer on our website, it's part of a packet. Uh usually shared with you guys after work session or you have these discussed, whether it be written. Uh and then I think in general, you get some direction outside, which is always starting with the communication you want to have. Um there's also been a limit, you guys can give direction in the future about some increased outreach you would like. Um but please have at least cleared up some of our confusing work, so it's there uh code level. Uh essentially just says follow the rules for uh Virginia and then I get provided a table in our work session last week, uh to provide an example of what requirements you see in Virginia to pay around back. For us, most of these years, only their budget, um you know, deal on an annexation or something big offered here, so. Beyond that, it's pretty straightforward. Uh ordinance just to clarify some of the Georgia patent uh faculty.
Same jobs will also save us some money.
Yes, it would reduce from being normally bad before, but just twice. Uh once every two weeks, the two weeks before in order. Uh so we would have some savings and then as Jen mentioned, uh over the summer, we should take a look at any uh online publication that's local petitions to be an online resource. So they're opening up that with the idea that now working will actually be online, that uh paper uh they come, but we won't know until a fall. So again, we'll run that to save a bit of uh.
Something emotional, if anyone's. Uh I move to amend the town code, section two point six six A. Uh in regards to modification of our advertising budget. Should I have a second?
Exactly.
Interesting perspective on this.
One thing I like, this, I don't know if they're all good things, but it's a little bit like for some, the only thing that's changing is the posting and publication from the old, right?
Yeah.
And what they also say is the old.
Well, it's a very big thing where our language is confusing, essentially saying that I should be out as a factor.
Right.
It almost sounds.
Yeah, I, I saw it, like it's backwards, it wasn't biological. It's like you have the ordinance, then you have a record, then they publicize it. And that's what it says there. It seemed like, maybe that's how it said, it seemed like it should be publicized first, then recorded, and then the ordinance. That's the label. But anyway, it just seemed kind of backward that way, because it's biological.
I should repeat the whole version.
Yes, it's clearer, but it's always. Kind of, yeah, okay.
The other question, your comments? Let's move in second and discuss with the uh work called.
Most of that?
Yes.
Mr. Briscoe?
Yes.
In times of yes. Mr. Bison? Ms. Mars?
Yeah.
Mr. Paine?
Yeah.
And. We need the goal book. Two, six, zero.
I have seven B of approval policy for those that patients on courts, students and committees. What are you gonna solve that?
So uh government services accept the renovation policy. Uh and the recognition will extend back to town after the last of this. Uh so the draft, there is uh the draft version that was discussed maybe last month.
It's been there for a couple months.
Yeah.
Our version.
Yeah. Yeah. Everybody had versions, very.
Yeah.
I'd like to.
I know, I mean, we're not there.
I like the motion that. Well, uh when we look at it, it's a little uh doctrine of our public, this, this, the clearest and had had cheaper traditions.
So.
Thus, Mr. Mr. Hides is a way to approach that. So I want to second that and we can discuss.
I'll second.
Say now we'll have discussion.
Well, this thing's been around for a while. I just feel like we've gone a little over it again. I think we're making a put in more bureaucracy that we need. It's just, just resigning from a commission of maybe.
My only issue with it is the accepted media way in there after the resigned person will not be to skip these activities. So if I know I'm moving in six months before my term, is that? And I say, you know, I'm gonna offer my resignation. I'm not gonna be Scottsville resident anymore, but I've been here for the next six months. I don't think, I think effective the date given.
Right.
It's better.
That's a fair question.
That's probably fine.
Yeah, this is, this is not the one that we all agree.
Well, you know, but, but I think for like this, if you're gonna resign, you don't, don't mention six months in the batches and you can mention.
That's courtesy to do that.
I know that.
Or you can say in two weeks or in two months.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that.
Yes, that's my answer.
Notice and actual indication, don't say I don't, I don't even have to like burn, but that doesn't mean uh I, I need to put a note, a notice out now. I would say, okay, next one. This is morally right. This can't, we can't pass it. And I just.
Okay, so let's take our.
Well, you agree, you agree with Bill. You know, giving a notice and and Bertha said like six months of this, hey, I'm leaving town. And then six days ahead, we're just leaving, submit your resignation. That's, that's, it's, it's two different things like Bill said.
But even in a corporate world, it's I mean, I, depending on what role I play, I've given three weeks, a month notice so that people have the opportunity to find and try to fill candidates and things like that with someone still in the seat. Uh this would not need that standard, so I can't, I can't.
I just, uh issue that's, this is not a, not a, this is not a from our work with yourself. They didn't just do their volunteer positions. And we've had people say, I'm leaving, you know, this is my last meeting. That's it. They don't have, they don't have to do, if we can't convince them to stay, they just, it's just a volunteer position, is that a you know, we're not gonna give them a conversation.
So let's just talk about it.
What would you guys like to see on the while we're in discussion, what would you like to see off?
I think we've been very clear that it should be, they give a date and it's effective on that day. So if I say I'm going to be here two more months, we're selling our house, so we're not gonna close for two months. I'm giving you all as a courtesy notice so that you can start to look for candidates and I can stay and finish out whatever work I'm doing. And maybe transition to a new person so that there's a smooth transition process. Whether I'm talking corporate or not, this is a very widely accepted practice in almost any organization.
The other thing I would say about, or what's it would be, so this came out of not a volatile time, but that's a console that we were trying, you know, somebody changed their mind in the midst of a lot of conflicts. I think there's really two issues. There's one issue, there's counter um isolated practice. Somebody, you know, wants to resign. So we find that they're resigning. There's also the option to say, you know, maybe it's now or not here, and I will just want to let you all know I'm leaving out of X. And the other one is to recognize we're all human beings. We might change our mind and it's not a, uh he was on or she was on, I mean, we, we most of the time we have trouble buildings, so we just want to be gentle and maybe my recommendation, yeah, completely is one of the other town councils. You know. One of our ladies here just supervised this last year. Cause we did have a revision on it, not.
Now we had a revision that we thought were, yeah.
Okay. Brother discussion. We do is take a vote. Either in our vote or we decrease it. That's all we'll know.
Except?
No.
David Burke?
No.
Fair times?
No.
Phil Hyson?
Yes.
Ellie Morse?
No.
Edward Dave?
No.
Motion, uh uh, all the people spot.
Back to the block.
Well, you know, maybe somebody else, you know, I don't, they, they're not here representative, but they have a go over it for again, and pretty much, that's just the best they can do. Count the rings, it sounds like you're in.
I, I can, yeah, I would.
Should also be kind of unfortunate, but still.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Uh right out there.
That's right. We've looked at drafts before.
We got a few versions.
Yeah.
It's pretty cool.
I'll pour you.
I think I, he's a part of those, I think I have most of the different ones.
All right, well, there's a more all for us. We have our special budget session, that's Tuesday evening, that's seven B on the third. And.
Mr. Mary, just what I said, I have six discovered by I have not either, I've looked at it. Whoever the time I was serving.
Whoever else for that.
Compliments of us.
All right, well, that brings us to the end of our agenda. The announcement to any target, so.
Uh the day of the fifteenth April, I know that's early. But um June fifteenth is deadline for anyone who loves for public office. It got filled progressive. Mr. McSett. And I leave, I, I believe we're the three in a row for. And they are, yeah, and they're packed, so. Well, it's full, full potential, you know, and one or two, a lot of blow at all. You got two months to. You can expect.
Thanks.
I think it's fifteen, that.
Well, I don't know.
Seeks up a little.
I'm sure though it's.
Now let's decide where you, you go to ride with the stand, I'll go to keep.
And tracking there.
That's all I'm getting at, nice.
Anything else of minimal importance? Appreciate everybody's attendance this day and night to get something done and we did it on a nice way, we actioned and I appreciate that. See everybody next Tuesday evening, seven o'clock, unless you want to stop by. Faber on Wednesday, the Chamber of Commerce after hours, food is always good. You have to drink drinks, but food is good and free.
And please, everybody, if you can't, even if you can't make it on Saturday for the, that's the word, that's the please get the word out to everybody.
Okay, well, all right. Somewhere. I don't know.
Sad.
I.
This is a record. It'd be a record. Look, I'm going, yeah, and um.